Take care of one.
I think he didn't stay.
Oh, I tell you what he's taken care of. He was very good with it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. All right, gentlemen, ladies, we will call this be the order reconvened, our meeting. Glad everybody's here. We don't have the usual upfront things to do. I do have a couple of items to add to the agenda if you'd be okay with everybody. We do have a request, Mr. Manager, you might want to address this, but we have it. We need to consider a resolution. The state has approved for, to take over Westside Duck Mountain Road.
That right.
Which is on Highway 106.
Adele Hopkins, thank you so much. You know her. She's run just best in the industry for five years.
So they have approved that pending our resolution to, to approve that, so.
They're all going to approve that tonight, but go ahead. Normally, you approve these resolutions and then the state decides whether or not they'll go into the state system. This time, they've decided that they will go on the state system, so your resolution will be.
So we'll go ahead and add that. Just go ahead and add that in. We just had that right now. And also, we've got Mr. Beagle's school, ladies and has now, he needs to add regarding the.
And a couple announcements, Mr. Chairman.
South Lakeville Elementary School, so. Let's start out with any announcements anybody might have. Mr. Travis, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to remind everybody, this Wednesday at 2:00, we will be having the presentation for the day of honor to Mr. Matt Henry and Dr. Tom McWish. They usually on the long serving field, they would give an award. I've asked the county manager if he would any, if that maybe you feel the county employees like to evacuate to courthouse, let them come. We have a lot of veterans there, but that's a special day for this community and it's special to him. And also, just to remind everybody that October 12th is the bridge dedication, 2:00, that's on Friday at 2:00, at the Western Memorial Park. And that would be a full program that we dedicate to the Pace Bridge in honor of Matt Henry also, so.
When was that again?
October 12th, 2:00. At the best, if the weather should be bad, we'll be inside the.
Exactly.
So, we're going to show that's all. We don't know about even, we wouldn't want to ask if we'd ask if nobody else saw us get hurt at this point.
Mr. Caver, do you have any announcements?
Yeah, I do have some.
Any admissions or anything?
Yeah, you can't fit stupid, that I know. And it was pretty stupid. But I, you know, we always laugh a lot on this board and we say, you know, you don't really care how good your ambulances are until you need one. You don't really appreciate how good your EMT guys are. Well, for those of you that don't know, when I did fall, I fell on our side. I didn't fall over on the business side, it was over on our side. And while that may be embarrassing to me a couple of weeks down the road, it was really comforting to me on Friday night, I'll tell you, to see the first piece of people that came up there wearing red and white shirts, and I knew they were EMTs and I knew they worked for this county. I felt a whole lot better. In fact, I thought Sam, the EMT man, for lack of a better name, from Hayward County, was going to have to have a fistfight to get to me through everybody that he tapped on the shoulder and said, "I'm an EMT, leave me alone." And they were. So, you know, I just want to say, you know, I always thought that, I always knew how important they were, but you never really have that appreciation until it's you that they're working on. And it's really a whole lot nicer to have people that you're working, that are working on you, that you know those faces. And the first face I'll always remember was Shane Corrigan. He's the first one I remember talking to, where I called him by his name. I did have a hard time convincing him that my head was fine, it was my arm that was broke. But once we, once, I think he knew that, he was just trying to make sure my head was all right. I said, "Shane, I'm like this all the time, I don't have to hit my head to be crazy." And then that's when he realized that, yeah, I really was okay. I know that, that, I always bring Brad to church yesterday morning, they celebrated all these guys, and I, you cannot know the pain, well, maybe you do, Ronnie, but that you're in, when you finally have to look up and say, you know, "I'm just not going to make it out there." I wanted to so bad, but there was literally no way. I mean, I was just, I was a basket case, just been running. All the good drugs had went off at one time, and, and the new ones had not kicked in yet, and it was just, there just wasn't any way. But I want to tell those people that my heart was there with them, and that I genuinely appreciate what they did for me on Friday night. It was special. If anybody thinks they're not special, then I suggest you dial up a ten-foot tower into a concrete stadium and you'll figure out real quick just how good they are. Actually, I don't recommend you do that, but, but I just want to say that tonight in open session, I'm very proud of them and I'm very appreciative of what they did for me. And the thing is, they'd have done that for anybody. They did. It wasn't because somebody was up there that signs their paychecks or has something to do with their budget. They would, they didn't care. They didn't know who it was when they came up there. All they saw was somebody doing a one and a half off the top platform, and they knew there wasn't a pool in there, so they decided they'd come up and check it out, and they would have done that for anybody, and I'm very appreciative of that. Lord have mercy, if you're on Facebook, you know all about it, so I don't have to tell you, don't do that, but.
Thank y'all. Mr. Chairman, let me piggyback on something he said, and thanks to you, and I'm sure you'll thank you, or the holiday paid back, and certainly did a wonderful job. The chaplains from over, from Mutton County, the fire department gave the message, Kevin led the singing, and Mr. Haley was there, and we all did an outstanding job, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Those appreciated by all, it was our, didn't see you, Dave, was you had an arm broke down? Were you sick or broke arm or?
No, I was at town. That's the first one in three years I've had.
Next time, write a letter. But we appreciate you, we appreciate you, and all those folks are appreciated, and here's some comments today, you should hope that's all everybody's. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's, you had a lot to do, and I know that.
I thank you very much.
And we're appreciative. It's a good service, of course, as well.
We will. We'll pass that on, folks, and we thank you guys for their participation. Do we want to discuss tonight, or have you, the possibility of a straight line? Yes, I think we will discuss that. I'll, we'll make that one out. I talked more about that, I think we will. We will work on that. The only thing, the only thing I have to, is that on the fact? Yes. Okay. The only thing I have to add to the announcement for me, we got a very nice card from the folk festival, addressed commissioners, and they asked to me to express their appreciation for our support of that event and what it means to the county, and it feels like bringing the economic boost, so on and so forth. They appreciate our involvement, and we should continue to support those things that preserve our heritage as a county, but it's a great effort. That, that, a very nice card from that group, it was. Mr. Manager, what, we go ahead and take care of the Westside Duck Mountain, you want to address that?
As I mentioned earlier, people might have put on state road system maintenance, and what we do have, they got to meet basic standards set by the state. Ordinarily, what they'll do is circulate the vision, get the property owners to sign for that, and the state will evaluate in terms of whether it meets qualifications for the state system or not. Nine times out of 10, they don't meet qualifications and they don't get put on the state system, but in this case, we have a small section of road, quarter mile, that you mentioned earlier, is called the.
They decided that.
And they have gotten approval, we have letter from the DOT, the chairman has said that they have approved, put that on the state system. The only thing they're asking at this point in time is an endorsement. We have a standard resolution, we use that. If the board's willing, we'll prove that, we'll, we'll date it and have the chairman sign it and send one to the, one transportation, one to the state system.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we endorse the resolution to recommend the DOT to accept Westside Duck Mountain Road, making it the DOT system. I have had the privilege of working with this company for nearly four years on Westside Duck Mountain Road, and thanks to Wesley Bryan's staff and Joel Sexton, and the many trips we've made to Westside Duck Mountain Road, so I would definitely make that one.
We have motion seconded by Commissioner Haley, we need discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. One other item that's come to our attention is a small item from the school system, this comes from.
South Lakeville, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this was, the school is on, this was brought from Chairman and myself, this is a letter from the PTO. I'll read it real quick. The playgrounds at South Lakeville School are in much need of mulch. The mulch provides a cushion to break for all students, increasing the chances of being injured, required that the mulch be playground certified. In other words, it can't ground up the old picture. The South Lakeville PTO has obtained two quotes for playground certified mulch delivered, the lowest quote of $23.70 provided by Costner Stockyard Sales. We would like to ask that board commissioners consider fitting the tops of the mulch with the South Lakeville PTO, the total is $1,185. We appreciate your consideration, should you have any questions, and the phone number sincerely Manny Hanners, Vice President, South Lakeville PTO. I did go out and look, Mr. Chairman, they are in much need of mulch, much needed mulch here, and so, you know, we've helped these other schools with whatever, equipment, whatever, and all that, asking for his mulch, and they're willing to pay dollar for dollar for what we put in, so in light of that, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we make a contribution to the South Lakeville PTO with an amount of $1,185, so they can go and get this certified mulch and get it put down for this children.
Correct. Okay, we have motion seconded, need discussion? The only thing I had to add to that, I've had a conversation with two, this could be, if you'll play, devil's advocate, it could be an item that would be handling the school's capital aid budget, however, some of the PTO's takes on, if I'm not mistaken, history, this PTO put it down the first time. And so they won't put it down again, so this is, again, this is the PTO doing this, and by them raising the money, half the money, that's less money than the county has to put into it, so I would recommend that we do this based on my conversation with the folks at South Lakeville.
Sure, we'll include that motion as the money, we'll do that with the.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Any other discussion regarding the procreation? If not, all in favor, that motion is seconded by the same guy?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. We have consideration of annuals bids, Mr. David Keaton.
Good to be back. Good to have you back. As you all know, we rebid our annuals package from the last meeting. We received five bids, and you should have a bid to help us in front of. I've gone over the bids the best that I can, and cannot say that that low speed is, needs to be taken out, so. With that being said, not while I understand that we have to take the low speed.
Low is responsible.
Low is responsible. What is? They have no reason to say it's irresponsible. That's what I was saying.
Have you checked that, anybody's demo today?
I actually called five or six of their sources. I had one source that said it was not a responsible bid, that they wouldn't buy any way in this town, but with a little more investigative work, it turned out that they had problems with paint, things, that was manufactured, did they agree to anything with paint or, so, and all the other resources I talked to.
That's to do with the equipment.
It is wood, wood bear in Georgia. I've never dealt with them, I'll be honest with you, I've not even spoken with anybody that come up with that.
How many people that you talked to said that you had, or said you weren't dealing with, how many people you talked to about?
I called four of their, their references. Three of, and all the ones I did call were in North Carolina, except for the one that didn't like them, and they're playing.
Let me ask you one more question, there was something wrong about that chair, to be included, give advice, and we had discussions up here. We will get that chair.
We will, they are included. And you notice at the end that obviously you don't have much bid package, but in this bid package, if they have, this is $1,075, and if I went to buy it myself, it would cost us almost $1,000.
You make that kind of our old bids? I've got your chair, please, they can, soon as they do, whether.
Saved a little bit. This was the low, this company was the low bid the last time before, and I believe they were $198 and something.
Basically, the chair.
Basically, the chair.
Who usually buy from Dave?
All of the other trucks we have right now were built by Northwestern Mercury.
Which, but they're the, they're the high, that's another, that's another high page you have to drive.
Yeah. Dave, anything to provide a further, when I come across here?
If we have to rebid the whole, I really would not want to do that. I would investigate that and see if they would come down more of three. I can't imagine they could, just seeing, just seeing how far they are below the next, you know, they're $28,000.
That's why I'm sorry. This is a pretty good amount, everybody had $260 budget, so you can say right below that.
And then you speak to the necessity, I know for a fact, that you, we just have, what, five ambulances?
At one time, or.
That's what you were saying, where you saved almost three fifths of an ambulance.
The life list had come in, four and a half, six, sixteen.
About $2,000.
Well, if they done, they just had to come back.
It's the same. You're saving three fifths of an ambulance, you're not going to back down that many ambulances.
I think the time factor too, if you go back.
Yeah, if you didn't have that, but I'm saying, if you can.
I suggest we accept these, and then take any recommendations.
I think we do need to do that. I think wait till the next one.
For the safety standpoint, go ahead and get these two.
I think that's right.
They would recommend that, so we expect that's right.
In, in light of that I do not know these people and never dealt with, I, my first choice would have been the next bid, and that was Wheel Coach, but I can't say that these are irresponsible, so.
There's no reason to.
There's no reason to disqualify, I'm going to select that brand. We're choosing mid which one then? Would have been a select custom, they build, they're a derivative of Wheel Coach, which builds a very high quality box, but there again, I have nothing.
Have you looked at the box, is that right?
I have not seen, I'm not seeing any of this, this company.
It's our specifications.
It is.
So it can't be much? What are they to be different, after what you said?
I, I don't know, you know, if you ever bought a car, you know there's all kinds of hidden things, you know, you may or may not get a spare tire unless you ask for it. A spare tire is in this, but all the other dealers have told me, you know, beware of the lowest price. Somewhere they cut corners to make it $28,000 cheaper than the other person.
And they might be hungry, that's why I'm building.
They might be hungry, and they, and they do mass produce them, I understand they have a very large plant, so.
Is everything that you feel like is needed in that?
It is. It may ask for, is in there, but.
And the warranty's the same as all the rest, that they, all warranties are the same?
Yeah, give or take. One might have a little better part than last year.
Motion seconded, custom truck body works for $200,000. We have motion by Commissioner Tate, seconded by Commissioner Beal, second motion is $200,966, custom truck body. Any discussion?
Just one more question, and same way we can have delivery.
Their, their specs, kind of, it's very rawers from 60 to 120 days, but on average, it's 90 days.
90 days. Then I understand that's probably lettering locally?
Yes. As you can see, this picture here, it's very similar to what we have, but ours will not have a Z on it, ours will have a straight line, just like the rest of our fleet does, but the blue, the blue writing on the side works in Macon County, and that's where we have the.
So there's no shortage of additions, we'll be having, will be logos and radios.
Logos and radios.
Everything else is trucks, side stream equipment for all the trucker. And our old trucks go on, you know, when I asked them, they go on bid, they go on.
They were blowed aside.
They're a clear surplus.
Yeah, they're, they're a clear surplus, and some have been used as county vehicles, have been remade into something that's not, needs to be as dependable, you know, like a maintenance truck or something of that nature, and some of them are sold.
Only, only discussion of this right here.
We have, we have motion, you made motion, we have seconded that motion.
Yeah, so, only discussion on this right here, only try to get the money, we can get our money, it's worth 2% of the difference in what is almost $30,000, so I think that we'd be making the rightest choice right now in this kind of situation, we're in, trying to save money, feeling sufficient. Also, what they were saying about this is just a recommendation, it's a little bit out, is that these ambulances that we have right now, I'd like to sit and think a little bit for a little while, so that we just break that, is that we actually have another, it's all possible, but anyway, one more question for that, what's this, we got?
Okay, thank you, Ron. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, seconded by the same guy?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. No, you need him, Dave. Get him on the call.
I'll call him in the morning. Thanks, sir. Item number three, consideration, we have a change order, I think we have documentation there, that you were granted around $3,000.
Yeah, the contractors are using project basis, and you see, that basis, your paper that you put in, and you have other things to conquer, and of course, this is, of course, our sewer project, the 6.5J sewer line, which is pretty much finished, but with the final, a lot of the adjustments, and the other adjustments, it comes out, we had a change order of $3,597.63, we haven't paid the last part of it until we get this change order approved, so we still owe Gary Grady some $20,000, but we haven't, haven't paid that for this, this last change order. I've had a talk with the engineers, and all the, all the numbers and so forth, and I have, I have no reason to change any of them, so I would, depending on the engineer's recommendation, recommend a word, approve this change order, and the net amount of $3,597.63.
In any way, you don't?
We still have the reuse system to do, we get, since we changed that, we changed it from a spray irrigation system to a purple pipe system, so that we can actually be, work more. That is a process of being approved and getting quotes from Gary Grady to modify what they originally bid on, and we should have that in, maybe it didn't, it was supposed to come in before, but we'll have by tomorrow, so by your October meeting, we should be able to, if you recommend, go ahead and have Gary Grady complete the last part of that, which was the, the blue, the purple pipe system, or, and we've also suggested that he may be interested in subcontracting, have a local contractor here, and working to go ahead, get their jobs started, give, I have several local contractors that would do that, maybe him or six, so we'll find out tomorrow, whether he wants to actually go ahead and do a subcontract with himself, or just let us, he gives a local contractor, and I would prefer that the, just go ahead and finish up this part of the project, let us contract a local contractor to invest that part, I think we'd be better for us to do that.
Has McGill Associates shared, you went with them, that they went back and fixed all the customer complaints we had, the people whose property they were on?
The ones that they didn't fix, I fixed, and fixed the last one, up this patchwork.
All right. Enough questions, or enough movement left in contract, if I'm watching out?
Yeah, there is, there's actually enough money left in contract, but we still have money that we have on the table, because it's, it's longer, but we still have some contingency money left, so we should be in good enough shape to have enough money to do the reuse system.
Would it be fair to ask McGill, I know about the re-circulating system and all that, but would you like to have a drop dead date at our next meeting? We will be done on this day. I mean, it's five, it's, you know, it's about to double.
So it's already double.
I mean, it's about to double, and a third again.
Yeah, it's always been 365 days, and so it's been finished by January 2011. So, sewer line is, for, the sewer line is finished, it's just that this, the reuse system, the entire party was supposed to be finished in 365 days.
So whatever we think, you know, we just even know, will be done by?
I'd feel much better if I had a drop dead date, if I had a local contractor, and I shut the rest of the, we'll.
I would, I would encourage you to do that, but you write the check.
I encourage you to do that.
When you write the check.
So hopefully, it won't take, it won't take just a few weeks to run this whole other system, it's very simple, it just runs a high pressurized line of hybrids, and we'll run it out beyond the landfill over to the station, actually, we'll go to the animal shelter, we'll use some of the water there, we'll use some at the wash down area for the landfill, and we'll use some of it for the environmental resources center, so it's not going to take long.
All right, Jim, I think that's, and that's a recommendation, we got to move that change. I think, I'm much seconded by Commissioner Cavers. Any discussion?
Just a quick question, I'm not familiar with the history on this, I was starting before I was here, but it looks like this last change order is for items headed to private businesses, is that correct? I'm assuming that right, number 12, the last item?
Six inch tab with clean out quantity adjustment.
And it says this item places four six inch clean outs on the vacant service line, and six orange clean out tabs that have the vacant spilling.
Yeah, this, this project just kind of give you a little thumbnail sketch, this thing goes back, what, ten years? Some of these, some of these tabs that they were supposed to do were not done, they weren't included, they should have been, they weren't, they weren't actually drawn on the, on the plans, and sometimes they found out when they went back and got the easement, and then read it, and said, there's supposed to be two tabs here, and they may have put one in there, and we, and we agreed with the property owner, we had to add another one to that, and so, these individual tabs were not, were not put on, on the plan, because they didn't know exactly where they were going to be, and so, over the course of the years of doing this, they got lost, and so, we come back, and the property owner says, "Hold it, you owe me another tab." So we went back and looked at the agreement, said, "Yeah, we owe them that," and it's supposed to be 70 feet apart, so they had to put that in, so it's a quantity adjustment, we have the contractor put those in, as they went along, instead of having to tell them, come back later and do this.
Yeah, my thoughts were, is it seems like most times, if you buy a gap, end of the line versus the line of course.
In this case, tax for exchange for easements and rights away, in most cases. Some cases, we actually had to purchase, Greenfield was with us on several negotiations, where we had actually ended up purchasing some easements and rights away in order to get the sewer line, well, Ronnie, a third, four years.
A little, four years.
So it's been a long, long process.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, seconded by the same guy?
Aye.
Opposed? That, that passes, item number four, where we can address this, I think it's just putting money in the changing, in the.
Yeah, this is just the formality, right, that the department has amended, that the contingency related to this project into the actual expenditure line.
So gentlemen, I submit, since you passed number three, your opponent passed number four, so we need motion, is that fair? Motion seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Five is consideration of BBT resolutions, we have one that, I've discussed this with Chester, there was, this is regards to the new loan that we passed the other week, the 1.5 billion for the computers for vacant state schools, we've already voted on this, I do understand that, but Chester, in reviewing that, reworded some things, Chester, I'm a little.
Yeah, let me get to you just briefly, what, what we had, I know in the course of your discussions about that, I know there were discussions about taking out the loan, or starting out at certain interest rate, the idea being that would be approval funds that could be utilized to purchase computers, but the way I understood you were discussing it, was that the school would purchase, school system would purchase the computers, and in turn, submit an invoice to the county, and the county would in turn, do reimbursement out of this fund. The, the problem with that is under GS 16820 financing, which is what you're doing here. you're doing here, the county has to be on buying, and the county has to do the security interest in what they're buying. When the package showed up, that became crystal clear, and that's the way BBNT had structured it, I felt like rather than the county just, uh, or the county manager, county attorney, the finance officer just running off in that direction without letting you know, we needed to let you know, also, there were a few changes that were required to the financing package to accommodate that arrangement where the, I mean, the county would be purchasing the computers, but allowing the school board to use them, uh, those changes, uh, are set for in an attachment to this resolution, there was a change to the opinion letter, change to financing agreement, and then there was a change to the project fund requisition form, that, as you know, in most of these situations, we, we have to bid the uh, property or formal or informal bids, as the case may be, before you even close on this, but, but you're not in this situation, because these purchases are going to take place on a staggered basis, um, and in fact, there's been no uh, advertising or no informal bids taken yet. And because of that, BBNT wanted to be sure that at such time as we drew on that account, that they were going to get an effective security interest, and so, they, on the requisition form, they have asked for the ability to basically fill out that UCC or that uh, secured transaction form for you, and I don't see a problem with that, the intent is for them to be secure.
And Lori, you're okay with that? It does, it doesn't change the, the terms, the agreement, anything like this, or is it...
Nothing, nothing in material way, the main thing, we just wanted you to understand, the county is going to be responsible for purchasing, the county will purchase, the county will own, but the school board will use.
I think it's uh, probably is a good idea, because it gives the county a little bit more global process.
I think it's a stacked BBNT in any way, but...
Jack, and Lori raised a really valid point, is just, I mean, if you live and bought one point five million dollar computers right now, there's a good chance they're going to sit for a while, or at least a good portion of them are, and I think the thought was is, let's buy them as they can work on them in the interim, the idea being, you, you get some warranties with these things, and you sure don't want those warranties to expire while they're in store.
And the other part of that is, you don't want to buy them now and not use them because the clock starts ticking on the, how old they are.
Exactly, and furthermore, I mean, you know, what's new in the latest and greatest day won't be six months or a year.
And, and the truth is, with technology, here's what happens, the further you go, the faster they get and the cheaper it gets.
Well, that was a good observation.
Yeah, excellent, good. So Chester, is that information, or you actually need us to pass this?
Yeah, I, I think, we just want to, uh, you know, I think at one point where you're saying BBNT can do those UCC, I really think that's something I'll need to pass, um, and, and given that the financing package that you delivered had to have a few changes to it, I just felt like it was appropriate for you all to know.
So you need to pass this resolution by motion?
Yep, and it, and we're, we'll be good, otherwise, they've already prepared the changes.
So just to clarify, this is simply redoing what we voted on last time?
It's not completely redoing, it's just, just changing.
But not modified terms?
Same, same amount, same terms.
Same number, and everybody else is the same.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll make a motion that, that we pass the resolution, approve the finance documents for BBNT company, we have changes authorizing chairman of Lake County to work with, and officers and employees of Lake County to fill in, complete and execute such financing documents on behalf of Lake County.
Okay, we have seconded that motion. We have motion and a second, any discussion?
It ends up being like I did, voting on it, it's the last term, and I think this is unnecessary, money, we pay for interest rates, we ship, and then we pay that off in respect for payments.
This is about children, I'm got to look for them. This is about students of Lake County, I'm got to look.
Yeah, but I think that we can work to party, money, spend the money to answer.
That's fine, I, I think for the record, if you're opposed to that, you need to go to the decision.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
My record show the vote is four one, Mr. Haverford. Uh, gentlemen, with that, uh, with that said, I want to bring up something new, uh, been talking with Lori, good bit, and I will break on her good bit and go through this, but I have some information here that she's prepared, you would have passed that down. Gentlemen? Chester, and Bobby, I got one for you.
And I'll get one of the other media.
Um, as you know, we, we just uh, approved that resolution for BBNT, and we have, there's two other loans on the, on the county's books with BBNT, as you can see, those are both listed on that sheet I just gave you, uh, the first one is the, the property for the five six school, the balance on that loan being one point eight million, uh, and it's currently at three point six nine percent, uh, Lori has, through discussion, she has gone back to BBNT and suggested to them that, that they might be a bit more competitive on the rate since they came to, we just approved one at, at one point four, and so, and you'll see there, they've agreed, uh, if, if we'd like to accept it, they're going to lower the interest rate from three point six nine to two point four nine on that loan, the one below, it's the same thing, you can read as well, I can, the rich one was five million, this was the library SEC campus, principal on that loan is two point six million, currently financed at three point four eight, and they've agreed to lower that rate to two point one nine, uh, and I took the liberty to uh, ask her to do that, and Chester, prepare the documents, in case we decided to approve that, it'd be, it'd be up to you gentlemen to do that, and Lori to discuss the details, they, they agreed, Lori not to, uh, there's no fees for this, there's no prepayment penalty, there's no finance, additional finance charges involved, there's no points per se, and Chester's, Chester's looked this over, comments, Lori?
I think you've something to put in that show there.
And I can't say that Lori is, I thought when we lost Evan, we lost the right arm, and what we, we did miss her personally, but Lori, uh, has done an outstanding job, I would hate to be in a negotiation with her, uh, as she seems to come out on...
I'll take this in and fail anything I got.
But here's, here's the deal, guys, it's not real hard, uh, we're paying three point six nine, the druthers pay three point six nine, or lower to two point four nine, no, no other strings attached, same terms, the other one, three point four eight, bottom line, uh, it's, one, we'll pay off in eight years, the other than ten, the savings of these two, there's, there's two simple moves here, we'll save...
One eighty thousand, four hundred and sixty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and sixty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So that, it would be my, my recommendation that we do this, uh, I think it's a brilliant idea to do it, um, and just commend Lori on her work on this, she's done outstanding job, and uh, can't say enough about the work she does. Chester, you want to come in on, I did take the, to ask Chester to prepare a resolution in case we want to do this.
The, um, resolutions are before you, there's one for each of those two loans, and very short ones, and, um, and again, I, I just echo what Chairman Corbin had to say, uh, finance officer, uh, that you can, uh, look at your loans and, if they breaks down like that, it's, it's a no brainer.
Well, not only does it negate the interest that Mr. Haverford just talked about on the loan for the, for the computer, you, you take the interest back out of that, even on a short period of time, it negates that, we still save a ton of money.
Listen, if I figured, Lori, I did, I'm not a mathematician, not as smart as you are, I figured, but, of course, we're saving, by doing this, we're saving more interest in the early part, because if we pay the principal down, of course, interest does go down, and my calculation, if I'm close, we're going, in the first full year of doing this, we'll save fifty one thousand dollars, is that close, fifty two thousand dollars?
That's probably close.
So, but of course, that would be two fifty, but the, the first year will save fifty, fifty two thousand dollars.
Lori, I'd like to say, oh, I appreciate you very much, what you've done, I think it's great, and, another commissioner, I'm not hard to deal with, but when it comes to spending money, I'm trying to sew up every little hole I can to save taxpayers, not that I'm trying to be a bad guy, sometimes, you know, I may look at it a little different, I'm willing to risk what you have to save, in this situation, I don't see a thing, I wouldn't be nice to you, great, I'm glad to see you, to save us much money.
Any, any questions of, I can tell you, it's, it's my recommendation to do this without question, but, do we have questions of Chester, or Lori about these agreements?
I don't have any questions, I just, thank you for your reference, Chris, Lori, it's uh, seems to be pretty simple and pretty simple, I'm ready for motion right now.
That's good.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a recommendation, and I'd like to make a motion to pass both resolutions, contract uh, zero 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 one and zero 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 two, to move these.
Do you say that, Mr. Haverford? That motion was by Mr. Haverford, seconded by Commissioner Haverford to approve both resolutions for refinancing, and let me just, uh, for full disclosure, one reason that, that we're trying to put this on the table today, if, if we, if this motion passes here at this moment, uh, we have the ability to do this tomorrow.
Of course, if, if Lori, they're, they're coming to, they're going to do this on the loan, so if we're going to do this, let's do it, and take advantage of it, so that, that, I really wish this would be that, so, full disclosure.
My comment earlier tonight, about need to make an addition to the agenda, is, um, we've got other lines out there too, if you're willing to work on these, my thought was, that I'm going to work on some, that's why I brought that up, that, uh, I know we've got so much bigger ones.
Excellent. Any other, any other discussion regarding resolutions? If not, all in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Black sign. Jim, that is, uh, an excellent thought, and actually, uh, to talk to Lori about that earlier today, we do have a, the original loan, I think, was twenty million dollars on Mount, that's a combination, I believe, of Mountain Valley, East Franklin, is that right Lori?
That's correct, yes.
And that is currently sixteen million.
That's cool.
And folks were, were paying four point five nine percent, and I think we've seen that the market is, is to where we can get that reduced. Who pays that loan?
BBNT, I talked to them about that loan as well as the other two, uh, and they gave me a rate, but I think, you know, it's something I want to pursue, is look out to the bond market, maybe look at limited, limited obligation bond, think you can save even more money on that route.
What?
But maybe, you know, look at bank, just the bank through fire, and look at the bond market, see which is more fair.
And, and obviously, not, we don't have those figures, but if, if we buy, uh, not even by vote, but I guess just by consensus, if, if we instruct Lori to investigate that, uh, possibility of, I think we're leaving it open ended, if she can look at, at refinance or a modification of BBNT, would be one option, uh, possible refinance with, with other banks, with, with false...
Well, if you can change the origination base or modification things, I mean, that's a no point.
Then you're saving. So looking at that, and then she's mentioned the bond situation.
We can't do that.
So is it, is it consensus of board?
That's what I was trying to get at earlier, just wanted to clear...
You're a great idea.
I would, and I'll tell you this here, everyone else in business, there's four of us here in business, and, and we've got this, uh, we've got a broke up arm, we've got, we've got, everybody's having to tackle the budget, try to save dollars, we've got taxpayers we owe, so.
Well, if you... Our question, Mr. Chairman, uh, do we not vote on the...
Yeah, we did, we voted for the...
We voted on the vote?
Yeah, we're not voting on the vote, it's all the risks, but consensus, okay.
But the idea is, if we save two hundred and fifty thousand, aren't we too small loans, or what can we save on a sixteen million dollar loan, I think it'd be, it would be significant, it would be sizable, so.
We bungled them one time already, Mr. Man, we bungled them, what, about three years ago?
A little longer than that.
Five years ago?
And I think it's when you put it to South Lake School project, but...
We saved about three million, huh?
Yeah.
So we, since this board will, will instruct Lori to come back to us with some recommendations, looking forward to that.
Right, and the reason, um, just let me point this out to you, um, of course, they stood out a rather small, one point eight, and right at two point seven, and those, when they were, um, I meant the, the limit was ten million, and actually, they've been thirty million as far as taxes and debt, so those two were simple, straightforward, you know, that's why I would have decided to proceed those with BBNT, but of course, the sixteen million, um, when it was, what, right now, you can only, the, the government unfortunately pushed that limit back to ten million taxes in, so that's why that sixteen million is going to be a complex, complex transaction, but if you refi it with BBNT, or look at other banks, or go to the bond market, you're probably looking at a minimum four months, more like six months, you know, if you get everything in place, you have to go to LGC, et cetera, so, but anyway, we'll definitely look at two options and, you know, see which is the better route.
That's too serious. Hard to get on, Lori, that interest rate on the, oh, probably...
Yeah, I don't think we can make...
I don't think we're finally got that many times, so.
I think the sixteen billion's the only thing sitting out there that we do better on.
There's not any chance of throwing that out there, some of these other banks have taken that decision.
They wouldn't touch, no banks have...
What, the point four eight?
Wells Fargo, mine, something like that, they wouldn't touch it, they don't...
I would think so, very much.
So with consensus of board, will instruct Lori, might be to flip that, manage, we instruct her to pursue some, some, uh, refinancing or refinancing options. All right, uh, the next item, uh...
Chairman, other, other business, I've get asked, and I'm, I, some of the other board will have asked, Mr. John, who, um, do you want us to conversation for?
I think we don't...
John's here.
Okay. Uh, we do have announcement, we do have a joint meeting with Town of Franklin and Town of Highlands, we have Thursday, October eleventh, six thirty PM at the Highlands Country Club, and I think they do, everybody should have gotten an email about that, they need an RSVP by October first, that's obviously, let them know if you're going to be there, so they can prepare the food, anything else?
Chairman, I, I need, I'd like to have a closed session, party, we didn't, we didn't know that beginning of the meeting, but I need a few minutes with the party and board.
I thought I said on the highway, what we're eating, but...
Let me, let me stay on that, that weekend, I think we meet on the night, Tuesday night?
Yes, right.
And, uh, Wednesday, kids are at school, all right, and Friday, so I'm on a free schedule, I'm away with my family, so, and all of that, but unfortunately, that's fine, I've only got a one mile drive to get to, get to the baby.
Closest, closest meeting you'll ever be.
That's right.
Understood. Uh, motion going to closed session.
I mean, yes, this is for, do, we, we've got, for about six, four, uh, six, four weeks before we fulfill that position.
That's for his position on the plan, or?
Yeah. But, but I recommend, before he, that advertise it up on the, on the county website up there.
When, when does that, uh, Mike, when does that, the fourth?
November.
So we need to advertise, that's Larry's fingers, uh...
At least thirty days.
Yeah, we have to advertise for thirty days, so we need to advertise it.
When is it before we come back to meet again?
Did we advertise it?
No, I mean, when it comes time to put it up, it'd be before we come back to meet again.
It would be, we would probably have to, of course, we have, we have to advertise the thirty days, I mean, so it would be our November meeting, which we November, wherever it is. Yeah, we go ahead and start it, we advertise that, October first.
Okay, second, I'll run this motion.
And by the way, I don't know if y'all know, but the applicant that we had, it's a good, it was a good man, Harry Yelton, was after the plan, when Harry passed, so, he's a good man, he's good friends, and, uh, if you guys know Harry, he was Vietnam vet, he lived down on Olive Island, Island, and, uh, and so, we had a lot of conversations, he was, uh, he was, he had a lot of money, keeping money, he was locked, he wanted thousands, thousands, thousands of dollars, so, but, uh, so our car flew out that thing, too.
All right, all in favor of going to closed session, seeing if I'm saying aye.
Everybody say aye.
Motion, seconded.
Preserve the attorney's right.
Attorney, attorney's right, I would not anticipate Bobby would have any action.
Okay, you can do that.